Ready?
Select board meeting, March 7th, 2022. This meeting is being recorded.
All right, folks, we're gonna start off with a pledge allegiance.
United States of America, to the Republic.
All right, in attendance tonight is Joe Didi, Russ Fox, Doug Moguln. Mr. Steinhardt is on Zoom, I take it? Yep, yep, beautiful. There's our administrative assistants. So first up, six o'clock is public comment. When has anything you'd like to say, please state their name and address for the record.
My name is Mika Hotel, 45 Pine Road. I wanted to go back to the February 22nd meeting.
Okay.
And it was under new business. And it was regarding the vote for the $800,000 for the federal legislature 2021 for the community development grant. Is that grant being used for the master plan?
I will get back to you. Quite honestly, I don't have that answer in front of me.
Okay. Okay.
But that's just me talking, but I'll get you the right answer.
So my follow-up to that then, Mr. Didi, is if it's not being utilized for the master plan, what are we planning on doing with that $800,000? Which is directly related towards housing and community development? And can we have access to look at what the terms are for that grant as well?
So the way that works, and this is off the cuff, is you apply for that grant through the CBDG, right?
Yes.
Yep, PBPC helps us submit that. That was that, those were the hearings during last summer into the fall.
All right, so those hearings took place last summer and fall. So so much went to housing through, if you needed septic and you qualify. Some of it goes to roads that aren't Chapter 90 qualified, especially down by the lakes. So when you enter that, when you apply for that grant, everything's already lined out.
Okay, so the terms speculate.
Yes, it is, and I can get you a copy of where, that's not a problem. But unfortunately, you can't go back and then, actually, I think you can go back in later if you don't spend all that money, like the food pantry, for instance. We say we spent X and there's a little bit left over. I think that's how we bought them their van one year. Because there was enough left over that they didn't use in a specific line item. Were able to then acquire the van, I believe. But yeah, that's already gone per se. We can't really go back and grab any of that.
Yeah, a big, a big section of that particular grant's gonna help with the, the projects you have on Bungalow Street.
That's where it's going, okay. Anyone else for public comment? Anybody on Zoom? Is anybody waving? Okay. Six to three, close enough. So up first, we have dying single possible being on sale of alcoholic nip bottles. Come on up. That's all you got?
Oh, no.
Okay, because I do better than that at my place.
And now, I have copies for you all, two, under one if you like.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. I would like to request an ordinance on the sale of alcoholic nip bottles in town. I walk my three dogs almost daily on Sheep pasture road and Point Grove road. It's difficult to walk continuously with them because they have to stop and sniff every single bottle along the way. Doesn't really get my heart going the way I would like. I sometimes walk with a trash bag to pick up litter. I've seen another neighbor do the same. I've seen people post on Facebook thanking the people they see picking up the litter, but they don't realize the litter is all nip bottles. On February 19th, in just under a half a mile, I picked up two 13 gallon trash bags on Sheep pasture and Point Grove road. 19 of those were just in front of my own house. And I didn't go hunting, I didn't go digging in the bushes, I didn't go digging in the snowbanks. These were all right in front of me or in threes and fours on the side of the road. In that inventory, there were four Dunkin' Donuts cups, one paperboard drink carrier, two water bottles, seven lottery tickets, four cigarette packs, two rubber gloves and a face mask, a freshly peeled banana and a $1 bill. The rest of that 26 gallons was hundreds of nip bottles and just two fresh beer cans. And the issue here is not only is it a mess. You can't walk the dogs because some of them are broken. You gotta be on scout in front of them to make sure they don't step on them. The bigger issue is these people have these in their cars. They're not walking with these bottles. They're drinking them probably in their car. The number one in there was Smirnoff vodka. It's odorless, it's colorless. It's perfectly in a water bottle or in your coffee mug, and nobody knows. These people are driving with it. They're probably going to work. They could be driving heavy equipment. They could be processing your insurance claim while they have this in their car. It's an ecological problem. Serious public safety issue, in my opinion. I've seen other residents cite the same issues on their streets. It's not uncommon, just coming here, on the way here. I was pointing out while we were driving again down Sheep pasture road this way towards Town Hall. I went, there's one, there's one, there's one, there's two, there's one. That was very far distance from the church to Depot Street. It's a lot. I was talking to someone at the library today. There were two right in front of me at the library on sidewalk. It's a big issue. So I'm asking that you all consider it. And if you think it's worthy to put in an ordinance on this.
Okay.
Oh, oh, but my visual aids. So those, you have pictures of the day's collection.
I pick them up in front of my house every day too.
Just three days later. Three days later, I went out to the same less than half a mile and picked up this bag. It's all nip bottles. Yesterday, which was 12 days from the last journey, I went out and picked up this bag in the same less than half a mile. That's fresh, it still smells. It's a lot. Time and your consideration.
And your, the dog is seeking help, I assume.
Uh, she has hope now. She has hope now.
Thank you.
Everyone, I want to sit a little bit to the side here. My voice doesn't carry very well, anyway. So, um, anyway, Bert Hanson, 153 North Mining Road. I'm here actually on behalf of the Agriculture Commission.
Yeah.
And the 61A status of Art Penello's farm at 72 North Mining Road. He, I sent you guys a letter the other day, March 3rd. He has a purchase and sale agreement from the same developer that's building the other houses on the south end of the
On the south end, okay.
And it's 32 acres of, of farmland there that agriculture and conservation and CPC would actually like to see preserved. And Mr. Penello is interested in the preservation as well. So our task is to, that requires, as you of course know, a warrant on the, on the town meeting, for the town meeting coming up in May. So my mission here tonight is just to be sure that we can have the full 120 days that, you know, the right first refusal allows, so we can do some research into, into preserving this and see, see how to best do that. I don't know if there's a, a mechanism, whether you guys vote on it or anything, I mean, to allow the, I don't know if, I don't know if you can override the 120 days, to be honest.
I don't either. I think we've circulated the, the document, right? And then past practice is if a board comes forth with, that they want to potentially exercise the right of first refusal under 61A, this board won't do anything until the, the question is settled. But I, I didn't mean to interrupt you if you were
No, no, I have a question.
Sure.
I think it's a, it's a worthwhile endeavor, but it's one, the question I have is around timing. Because we are all, the 120 days is easy peasy, but we're less than that for the deadline for articles for the warrant for the annual.
Right.
So, and if we were to have to do anything further for this, I think then it starts to run into problems with time. Whether you, the applicant who's requesting the release from 61 would then wanna work with the town to extend the time period or, or something to get to that next special or next, even next annual to, to have to, to do that. And, and to get funding and everything else that needs to happen. So I don't know if any discussion's been had around that or thought around that.
Yeah, actually, the Conservation Commission is taking that up at their meeting tonight at 7:00. So after this, I'm gonna scoot right out because there's Zoom only, so I gotta go home and get on that meeting. Community preservation is interesting, too. They, I do believe they have the funds in their account, so to speak. So, but anyway, to your point, we're kind of, kind of scrambling to make sure we can get, get this together in the next few weeks, you know, for the warrant deadline. One thing, just a little bit of a tangent, but we learned recently, I've learned recently that in the town of Lincoln, Mass, they've bought, I believe it's 11 parcels, and then they lease them back to farmers who, who need land. So that's actually a, brings some money back to the CPC. So that'd be awesome if we could work that out. Anyway, just a
Good idea. And I think the other thing I want to put up for discussion, and perhaps it's time we revisit collectively at a future date, is we used to have, or we have, a list.
A list.
We call it the list, right?
The list.
We had asked every board and commission in town to come back with their list. Doesn't matter, Pine Sky, who owns it, where it is, what it is. But if this piece of property came up, that we would die on the field to try to buy, right? So North Pond was on the list. The golf course was not on the list, by example, right? So North Pond was on the list, it came up, we did everything we could do to, and it's, it's bought and preserved. Not everybody agrees with how it was bought and preserved, but it's bought and preserved. But, and I'm not looking to open an old wound. But my point is, when the other piece at the south end came up, I had spoken to a commissioner on, on AGCON and said, okay, it's not on the list. So how can we buy some time to try to line up funding or, or what have you? And after much discussion amongst themselves, they decided that, but it, it wasn't gonna happen. So maybe it's time to revisit that list now that some boards have changed over and there's new people and, and different, maybe some different priorities that we should revisit that list from, and using the data from the, you know, the open space, open space plan. Maybe it's part of the discussion under the master plan to say, okay, this is a key parcel. If this one comes up, we want to try to do what we can to get it. And then it also speeds the discussion sometimes when other parcels do come in and go, okay, maybe we can look at it, but this one wasn't on the list. And we really have to keep our powder dry for some things. I think that was the exact term I used with the commissioner was, you know, sometimes we'd love to do it, but eventually we're gonna, we can't buy every single parcel that comes up. We have to pick our, our spots that we want to go, go to battle with.
Yeah, actually, I was talking, Carl Steinhardt, and I were talking about this a little bit this morning or this afternoon. And he said, well, is it on the list?
Yes, that's the first thing that we all think about, is it on the list, right? Exactly.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, he's, he's watching from up above.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm right here, Bert. You're right. It's the same discussion with head. And the other thing is, I'm not sure if some parcels that the CPC are very interested, whether or not they might come along in the near future, especially the, the one up on North Loomis that had monies appropriated at one time. But that went into a land court issue on the Kellogg property. So we want to be mindful of having funds in place to be able to jump on those ones, which were an earlier priority for those other boards.
That's almost the converse of what I said, is, so if we, a parcel comes available that wasn't on the list and we go after it, and then six, eight months, a year later, a parcel that was on the list comes up. Well, maybe we've allocated resources, scarce resource, to others, one on the list, now we gotta scramble. So it's a balancing act, it's a balancing act.
Got you, yeah, I understand. So I don't, I don't know, I should know this, but I don't know at the moment if it's on the list. But I'll, I'll be finding that out.
I don't recall it being on. I'm not an expert on the overall
Does the 120 start when they clock this, they clocked it in? Man, we won't be up against it, like you said, time meeting and everything else anyways.
Yeah, I'd have to look up the law. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to
No, and I don't know either, I think it does though.
It's probably when it's clocked in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think when the, either the owner or the buyer or seller informs the town, we, just, just to sort of FYI, we were notified by Robin on February 15th. We found out we and the Conservation Commission found out.
So from the Board of Selectment, that's our, yeah, clock, that's my understanding of processing. Robin, if you know different, I think it gets clocked in, the town clerk sends it to the Board of Selectment. Board of Selectment distributes it to the relevant boards for input, which is, that process seems to have worked, right? So we got that going first.
Yeah, we do.
And, right, and so everybody's got their, have their discussion on it, and then it comes back. So, you know, the, the AGCON voted to at least want to investigate it further. Same thing had happened with the parcel down at, the south end piece, right? I come back and said, look, we want to look into it more to see if we can get someone, some funding or a, a farming cooperative of some kind, if I recall. And it didn't come to fruition, and then we let, we let it go. But we waited for that feedback to come back to say, okay, we tried, but we couldn't. So, okay, now we've got to release the right under 61A.
Yeah, so February 15th or even so, thereabouts, that takes us to
Right, but it's, I was looking at this and doing the math. The other way is, the articles for town meeting are due at a certain date, which is, your 120 gets you way into the, where you need to be, but the town meeting is coming up sooner than that date. So
We have work to do.
Yep, absolutely.
Just wanted to make sure to bring it to your attention and, yeah, we're working on it.
Much appreciated.
Well, thanks for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Did you have anything else?
No. It's just to echo what Doug, we gotta, I talked to Art, and I know Art would like to see this preserved. I'd like to see it preserved.
Yeah.
We got a lot of questions in a very short period to get answers if it, if we wanted it as on an annual town meeting. I mean, there's a house involved, there's barns involved. Is the town of Southwood gonna own houses and barns? What exactly are we gonna do with it? Is it gonna be used for agricultural purposes? I know we got the Sofinowski Preserve less than a quarter of a mile down the road
Right, that's true, yep.
That we use for a facility. You know, I'm not against preserving it, I'm just saying, we got some serious, serious questions that need to be answered. And I don't know if we're gonna be able to answer those before April 1st.
Yeah, I, I have.
You know, you, you do have your work cut out. Because I, I know that with the preserve, the Sofinowski Preserve, at one point, the Conservation Commission was in, or well, still is in charge of that as trustees. They were, at the beginning, were actually paying a farmer to raise a product. Okay?
Okay.
Until we discovered that and said, what are you doing? And now they tell us that they can't find any farmers that'll pay anything to, to raise, well, hay on Sofinowski Preserve. So now we have this land of ours, you know, which would be good for hay or, or for maybe for silage, you know? But it would be nice to know that we had farmers lined up that are willing to at least pay the, a reasonable fee and carry the insurance. And then, but then we still have to figure out, what are we gonna do with houses and barns?
Yeah, yeah. And Art suggested, well, maybe, you know, the cart goes out, of course, that's
Right, and that, that's, and that's why I'm saying, April 1st is in three weeks and, and that's a big nut. But maybe we can work with Art and, and go that route. God bless you. You know?
Well, we'll get it, we'll, we'll give it a try.
That's, that's right.
There's nothing wrong with giving it a try.
We'll give it a run at.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Payable warrant, 2221 dated 3/10/22 in the amount of $232,708.21. I need a motion, session minutes dated 2/28/22.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Moguln will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moguln, aye.
Executive session minutes dated 2/28/22.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Moguln will second.
All those in favor? Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moguln, aye.
Yeah, this goes, all right. So we're probably doing separate. Application for hawkers and peddlers for Fox Brothers, Inc. For the dates of 4/15 and 4/16, and for 4/17, 2022. This is to sell flowers at the mobile station, is that Mother's Day?
Easter.
That's Easter, oh, she's, I'm right. I will make that motion.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, all those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Sting. Doug Moguln, aye.
And then we have another one, the Fox Brothers, Inc. This must be Mother's Day, right? I657 and 58.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
And that is also to sell flowers at the mobile station. I'll second that motion. All those in favor? Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moguln, aye.
Do you sell flowers on Father's Day? By the way
We don't, I mean, we just want to be quiet and silent.
Just a footnote, tomorrow is International Women's Day.
Is it?
And it's become a very popular day for flowers.
Yes, it is. Okay, and we have the cultural, look at that beautiful penmanship. That's beautiful. The Southwood Culture, it is, look at that, that's gorgeous.
You gotta give credit where there's great language.
So one day local license for the Cultural Council for the art show, which is going to be April 22nd, Town Hall.
Russ Fox will make that motion and wave the police officer.
All righty.
Doug Moguln will second the motion.
The map is here, everything looks like it does every time we do it. Yes, we have, yeah. All those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moguln, aye.
Approve emergency 911 board incentive grant of $40,648 for the Southwood Police Department for dispatch.
Russ Fox will, how do we make that motion?
Chief, is there anything we should know about this? There you go, say that again.
It's generally a, a grant that we apply every year to the 911.
Yep. Thank you. So the motion made, yeah?
Doug Moguln will second the motion, thank you.
All those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moguln, aye.
Thank you, Chief. Approve DPW applications for culvert grants to Mass DER for Klein Road and for Davis Road culvert.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Moguln will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moguln, aye.
I don't Carl, did that come in?
Uh, the MOA, not yet. We're still waiting for that to be worked out, but it's gonna be the same generic language as the previous ones for other supervisory permission, position promotions.
Russ Fox will make the motion to approve the chairman signing the MOA with the DPW unit for temporary supervisor role.
Doug Moguln will second that motion.
All those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moguln, aye.
Increase park and rec beach salaries to the minimum wage of $14.25 per hour. Gates and concessions are $15.50 per hour, which is for also, it says, per hour beach manager. Okay, I'm sorry, let me read that again, let me read that again. Minimum wage, $14.25 per hour for gates and concessions, and $15.50 per hour for beach manager.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Moguln will second.
All those in favor, Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moguln, aye.
Okay, I have approved agreement with CAOK, of Carl Steinhardt, for three years.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Moguln will second the motion.
And you have to stay all three years, Mr. Steinhardt, correct? Yeah, I think that is a yes.
I don't think he was serious on that, Mr. Chairman.
He wasn't. Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moguln, aye.
Review Springfield Police Department request for Springfield, I'm sorry, review Southwood Police Department request for Southwood PD overtime police and dispatch account supplemental funding. Chief, get us up to date.
So the police salaries over, overtime line item?
Yep.
Over the last several years, I don't want to say it was, we're just a level funding, we started with the same amount. So historically, going back several budgets, you gotta come before you in the spring, just for some supplemental funding to carry us into fiscal year.
Yep.
So based on our trend, and we had a lot of people out with COVID this year, we had, we're in fact, we're pretty hard with that. And also with the amount of rec patrols that we put out over the summer to cover the issues on the lake, it really cut it to our overtime budget as it, if it runs that way. So I'll open, see, $50,000 of monies to get us to that fiscal
Yep.
And then for dispatcher salaries, we have a park which is now, we're gonna work through. Our dispatcher supplement a lot of the shifts that are thrown by the climbers. And it was part of that this year, as a transition into utilization process. Where every brand can be less fearful as part of time to help with that void. And salary increase as part of that.
Yep.
To make it so we can work more. So I'm asking for $10,000 in dispatch to
Mr. Chairman, this would go on to the, this would be going on to the special town meeting warrant agenda for the May meeting.
For this?
Okay.
As it would clean up this, this whole year.
Clean it up, okay, understood. Thank you. And then, of course, the thing on police reform goes, this is just a drop in the bucket. And then, of course, the thing our police reform goes, this is just a drop in the bucket. So I need a motion.
Uh, motion to, Carl, just for clarification, so we're going to put this on the special?
Yes, sir. It's going to be on there for a year end expense, uh, just as the police union settlement agreement that you signed last fall, well, that's going to town. I think that'll also be on that, uh, and then any of the other colleagues in any of the other issues that I've talked about with the OPEC, as well as, uh, you know, vacation leaves, buyback and so forth to liquidate some liabilities.
So Chief Landis can operate until that May meeting?
Yeah, that was my question. Does this, what happens if this needs, if needed before then? Then do we do a fun, uh?
You could, you could do, I gave Bob, when Bob had raised the issue, I explained to him both pathways, and I think he thought he could get till this, uh, May date. But it's certainly something that he could revisit. If you want to move this up sooner, then you'd have to do it as an emergency transfer, and you could discuss that at the March 19th budget meeting.
I believe the chief agreed that.
I believe I can make it to.
Till, okay, the third week and mid. And if not, you're just going to reach out earlier than later. And, yeah, okay.
All right, so Russ Fox will make the motion to put these two requests on a special town meeting to be held the third week of May 2022.
Doug Mogul will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
All right, so Carl, next I have approve chairman to sign federal FY19 CDBG grant amendment for PB PC for the time extension of 630.
That's correct. That was sent to us by Erica, and that's for the oldest, um, federal fiscal year community block rent we have out there sitting that they're closing down. So they need to have another extension that they have to file with that state agency.
Okay. Russ Fox will make the motion to approve the chairman this time.
Doug Mogul will second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Will that be on the counter for me to sign eventually?
Uh, yes, sir.
I didn't see it, that's why I was asking. Business, planning board zoning referral for bylaw changes related to major development. Review bylaw? No, related to major development review bylaw. Sir, how are you?
Great, how are you doing tonight?
We're seeing you a lot lately.
Good to be seen, how about that?
It is, no, I'm, yeah.
So before you this evening is a request, I'm sorry.
Name and address.
Oh, yeah. John Goddard, town planner.
Second floor, going on the left.
Yes, that's right. Currently found here at Town Hall and DPW headquarters. Before you this evening is a request from the planning board, um, to refer a potential bylaw, zoning bylaw amendments to allow for a major development review process. That's been the subject of some informal discussions with the planning board for some months at this point in time. Uh, in a way, it is front-loading a lot of the information that the better local consultants provide in their applications. Uh, in this case, it's putting it to paper for projects that trip certain thresholds in terms of magnitude, how much traffic, how much size, excuse me, the size of building, potentially impervious area, those types of considerations. Some of the discussions are also looking into, um, putting that information into a comprehensive impact statement, um, also other ways to allow the public to have notification, perhaps a community meeting, um, and assigning responsibilities to, well, in this case, it would be the town planner role, uh, in terms of helping to determine, um, or at least provide a recommendation of how this might proceed at the planning board level. So having said that much, the request is for a referral for the planning board to hold a public hearing related to this process.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I can see the look.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
I'll second the motion. I just want to go on record before, in case anyone has any objection, I did speak, I've, I've sat through a lot of planning board meetings, uh, on this issue, and I did attend one planning board meeting in my role outside of town with my employer, um, and spoke to a potential expansion at my employer. So I just want to get that on the record, but I'll second the motion to send this to the, to the planning board to hold a public hearing.
Understood. All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Thank you all for your time tonight.
All right, Phil, thank you.
I, I should probably ask, are you hoping for this annual town meeting?
The target, although we're playing a bit of a game of brinksmanship, would be, yes, hold this, uh, hearing on the 22nd.
Of this month?
Yes, um, we're hoping to hear on the 22nd. And if this, the art that the discussion takes leads to, that was the recommendation we'd back and potentially as a form of a request for a warrant article.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, it's not been uncommon for a planning board article that's been referred to them, that's in a series of public hearings, to, they'll have a warrant article placed warrant while the plan, while the board is reviewing things, as long as they come off with a closed hearing and a recommendation for town meeting floor.
Gotcha. A place holder as you will, yeah? All right, thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, authorize chairman to submit a CPC application for funds related to Town Hall Roof Project segment.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
And this is the, what this must be, conservation restriction baseline documentation report for North Pond Acquisition, 49 South Long Yard Road.
Yeah, Robin has that, uh, the two binder books that were delivered to our office last Thursday afternoon, ConCon, Mr. McWilliams. And this is something that has to be done to close out the requirements of our acquisition of that property where the Franklin Land Trust, uh, had acquired the land, then approved. We went through town meeting, and then it was given to the town through a sale, and now they're going to hold the conservation restriction.
Okay, so we just need a motion to approve?
Yeah. Yeah, and you have it there, there is a signing page, I believe, on both copies under, um, page 96.
Okay.
This is just an oversight, Carl?
It's, it's, yeah, it's a follow-through on what we need, so it's a, it's a baseline documentation report that had to be prepared for this because of all the funding sources and for the, uh, the whole.
All right, Russ Fox will make the motion.
Has, has this document been reviewed by the relevant board that's going to hold this and send it to us with their approval to sign, or?
It's come from, it was provided to us by the chairperson, Conservation Commission, to sign off for the town.
Fair enough, I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Okay. Mr. Steiner, do you have any new business?
Um, I just want to, I mean, obviously, based upon last week's, uh, meeting with the designer for the Town Hall Roof in HVAC, I have provided you with copies of a draft barring order, so that is something you'll have to be looking at. And we know the first part of that project will be going out to bid for the roof part, because that's a major part that, um, is already finished its design. And then the, the, uh, was amended after a number of meetings with Mr. Sutton, the clerk of the works, and the designer, so that, uh, design change will, uh, change order will be coming, and that, uh, value of that will also affect it. And then, of course, the leftover money that we, we need to compute from the fire station roof and masonry project, which is closing out, because those funds would also be revoted for a like purpose of which this is. So you'll see a copy of that, you should be reviewing that, that will also be a town meeting warrant for the annual.
All right, thank you. That's it for new business?
Yep.
Mr. Fox?
No, sir.
Mr. Mogul?
No new business.
I have no new business. Mr. Steiner, do you have any old business?
Uh, I had put your goals on the, um, the bottom of the old business thing, so if you want to go through the rest of this list and get to that, or if you want to start out
We have in our packet?
Yeah, it's in your packet, or more importantly, since we have town council, um, we have town council Ryan O'Hara here, so you may actually want to take these out of order and address the White Street issue on the packet that you also have before you that came from, that you were asking about last week on the status.
Let's do that. Sure, I unmute it?
Good evening, Ryan.
Good evening, everybody. How are you?
Good, sir, how are you?
Very good.
Have you worked this out with all the parties finally?
Well, I, I believe it's in a place where the board is, uh, it's prepared for a board vote. Uh, you have one final plan in front of you. It is still a draft plan, but it includes a parcel A that is identified. That is where the, uh, what would be carved out essentially by the relocation. Uh, the, if the board were to vote affirmatively tonight on proposing this real, or thinking this relocation should go forward, I would go ahead with preparing a warrant, so, uh, it can be placed on town meeting as it, the actual relocation does require the vote of the town meeting.
And our DPW was happy? Randy Brown? Is he on there, Randy? Hey, Randy?
There he is. How you guys doing?
Hey, Randy, long time no see.
Yes. Well, I, I did get the email from Tony O'Hara this afternoon. Um, I, it, it's a consistent with the discussion we had about this, uh, maybe a month or six weeks ago.
Yeah.
Um, I don't see any reason why there, you know, on my end, I, this, this looks good. Um, we're not losing any rights or any, any use to that turnaround area. That was the biggest thing that we had. As long as we ma, we maintain that, uh, responsibility, that, 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 um, we still keep that.
Mr. Fox, are you all set for this?
I am all set.
Mr. Mogul?
I think I'm all set.
All right, so we just need a motion to approve?
Russ Fox will make the motion to approve the recommendation of town council concerning the matter of White Street.
Doug Mogul will second that motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
All right, gentlemen, while I prepare a warrant article, and that'll be before you in all likelihood at your next meeting.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You as well.
All right, calls and objectives. It's a couple down. So are we looking to tweak this, Carl?
Yeah, I mean, it, it just basically reflects, it reflects the last time you went through it, and you spent a considerable amount of time in one of your meetings. You can either look at it to see if you want to add anything this evening, or each of you can individually review it and provide to me your edits, and I'll put it in as part of the package for a future meeting, whatever your preference is.
Gentlemen, make sure you review it this week. You're right, it does, it's cleaned up from the last time we had.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time cleaning it up. A few things need to be tweaked, you know?
Yep.
Um, you know, one that stands out, of course, is the fire station. I think everything has been checked off now, but there could be a few minor things. It looks good.
Okay. All right, we'll revisit. Anything else, Carl, for old business from you?
Uh, hey, looking, uh, let's see. To, last week, I met with the, uh, ConCon panel, and determined the number of applicants that we would be interviewing, and those applications, and those people will be met with next week. And, um, so that's progressing along, and then I just want to remind anybody that wants to submit something for the special or the annual town meeting, get it into us by April 1st.
Yeah.
So that's what I had, sir.
Okay, so what's left is North Pond Violation Waiting for Fish and Game. Appointments for town boards and committees, that's getting closer, on my understanding?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move old, the appointment for, uh, AgCon to be an agenda item for discussion next week.
Okay.
Unless the people in the sky object, but, um, I've spoken to Mr. Hanson, he's still here, I spoke to Mr. Hanson, they're going to carry it as an agenda item in their, their meeting this week.
Okay.
And send forth a recommendation, um, to us for further discussion. There's still some items to be worked out based on my, not for AgCon, but for others, uh, based on my discussion with town council. I'd also like to move forward the discussion for, carry as an agenda item for our next meeting is appointments to, um, high-speed internet, so.
All right, so Doug, both of, all of those things are under the old business now, are you stating that?
I want to carry them as specific agenda items.
As an appointment?
We, yes, or at least as an agenda, yes, as an agenda item for handling under our meeting next week, whether we want to have, um, I don't know that we need to interview for those, we can discuss it, but given the, the previous open meeting law claims that were made, we will be very deliberate in this process.
Also add historical.
I was getting to that one, yes, and, and, um, I believe that one, um, as well, for historic.
It, it, do you also want high-speed internet committee ones there, too?
We'll carry those three for discussion on how we're going to approach them next week.
Okay. All right, so you want us to move those from old business up to what, new business?
Or as a scheduled, a scheduled appointment on the agenda next week at some point?
Okay, we can make that a scheduled agenda appointment, huh?
Correct.
Uh, just realize, next week, you are not meeting, it'll be the 21st.
That would be fine. That'll give us time to shape up the agenda.
Sewer system IMA with Westfield, still sitting there, board and committees procedure.
Harry?
Henry? White Street layout, we just discussed. Truck parking and air brake regulation bylaw.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I reached out to, uh, Chief Landis, who's here tonight, and if he'd like to stay and make any statement, that's certainly welcome. Um, we had the safety officer in on this, and he basically said there was no safety issue, it's a quality of life issue. Talking to Chief Landis, uh, he concurs that they've, they've had no issues whatsoever. So I think this came out of, you know, might be something that'd be better to be referred to the master plan study committee, because I don't think there's an urgency here, because we don't have any issue. And Chief Landis made some good points that, you know, certain roads were mentioned, but if, if you're going to do something like this, why aren't you looking at all the roads? Now, so I'd like to suggest to the board that this, this, uh, issue be sent to the master plan.
Fox? Um, I mean, I reviewed the request, I, I have no objection to the, to the thought. I, I think it, statutorily, it's going to end up coming back to this board. I don't know that the granularity of the master plan subcommittee is going to look at something at, at this level, but.
Yeah.
Worthy of, it can be carried as an agenda item in master plan and as the designated, I'll take it back to them and say, this is, should we have this discussion from a, you know, there's, and, and see if it's, they believe it's the right forum to address that as part and parcel of the master plan. to address that as part and parcel of the master plan.
I just didn't want to see it just keep languishing.
No, I get it, we, we need to take some action on it.
We don't, you know, our plate's kind of full getting ready for the town meeting.
Right, and we did ask the gentleman, the basis, the genesis of his idea, and it seemed to come out of a singular project.
Right.
And so I hadn't heard, and I believe from the safety officer and from, from others, that it, it hasn't been a big issue in town.
No.
You know, exhaust.
Trying to curb it if it, if it did arise. Yeah, and I think it was brought up when the first, when the same parcel was looked at before this last time it was looked at. There was X amount of trucks coming into town, and I laughed and said, we don't have a trucking terminal. We don't have a FL Roberts or a Pride that fits fifty trucks to sit until their scheduled time. You know, so, yeah. Right, master committee it is.
Yeah, and just to get some feedback and get some, throw it out there, you know, another consideration I thought about, the, for an agricultural community, right, the farm, and, you know, during, when people are doing silage, I mean, we've got a lot of heavy trucks.
Oh, we do.
You know? And I certainly don't want to take any action that's going to hurt agriculture.
Right.
And the same thing is happening with agriculture in the springtime, bringing in heavy trucks to do liming and fertilizing and spreading rye, things like that.
Anything else under old business?
I have, Mr. Steiner and I have worked on that declaration of solidarity with Ukraine.
Yep.
If I can, it's, we didn't retype it, so if, I'm, I'm going to try. It would read, "Southwick stands in solidarity with the people of Ukraine in the face of this abhorrent, unprovoked assault on their country, their freedom and their lives. The board asks Southwick residents to join with us in expressing our support for Ukraine or its people, especially for our fellow Massachusetts residents with Ukrainian roots, who are deeply worried about the safety and welfare of their loved ones right now. As we bear witness to the escalating tensions, we ask our community to support the efforts to implement aggressive sanctions that punish Russia and cripple its economy, as well as support Ukraine."
Do you need a motion?
If it's all right, I'll make that a form of motion that we accept that proper motion.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
The second thing I have, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I would like to ask that the fire chief, you have listed under goals and objectives, fire chief recruitment process, ask that that be business.
Okay. Yeah, we got to start working that.
It's March.
It's a big picture, yeah.
It's March. That's, that's it.
On the old business?
Oh, got it already.
I don't have any.
Carl, we're good, still?
Uh, well, I just want to remind you, last week, I reviewed that other draft job description of that new assistant CIO position, so it'd be appreciated if you guys could review that and get it back to us, bring that forward to the full board and see what edits need to be made.
So why don't you put that on the agenda for two weeks out, too, right? So we.
All right.
Pass it and we actually discuss it.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, so that's all we have for old business. That's going to conclude tonight's meeting. We are going to go into executive session to not reconvene. Thank you for coming. The motion to go into executive session for MGL chapter C thirty A, S twenty-one, two and three, two one four, section one B, and CMR twenty dash oh three, one B. Labor council litigation and threatened litigation and collective bargaining strategy for non-union staff, department heads, and collective bargaining units, police coalition, DPW, IAF, executive session, MGL chapter three, AS twenty-one, two and three, chapter three one four, section one B and CMR twenty point, twenty-nine point oh three, one B, exemption number two. Move to go into executive session to conduct collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel and to not session. Move to go into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and to not reconvene in open session. Declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on a bargaining position of the body and to not reconvene in open session. Exemption three, move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, and that the chair move to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to not reconvene in open session. Move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, and that the chair declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the body and to not reconvene in open session. Two and four, section one B, a person shall have the right against unreasonable, substantial, and serious interference with their privacy. The Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such and any connection therefore to award damages. Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.